Gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Before we start tonight, we do have a lot of people signed up to speak. I will remind you, please say your name, your address, and try to limit your remarks to about five minutes if you could, okay? So before we start, this is our first meeting of the new year, and we begin every year with a state of the county address, where we talk about what happened in the past year and what we're going to be doing moving forward. 2019 was a year of transition for Allegheny County, as the county continued building a foundation for growth and development. Tonight, we reflect on moments from 2019 where the community came together, where we invested in the county's future, and where we continued to plan for tomorrow. Ultimately, the path forward in 2020 will be based on the partnerships we established in 2019. Allegheny County government stands ready to work together in this new year, knowing that little can be accomplished by one, but much can be accomplished when we build our community. Before beginning the state of the county address, we'd like to thank some of our elected officials, partners, and the staff who are critical in advancing the policies of this board and moving our region forward. I believe the elected bodies of Allegheny County are more united than ever. Mayor Morris and the Cumberland City Council entered into a memorandum of understanding 11 months ago in February 2019 in this room to set forth efficiently and effectively addressing the delivery of services between the city of Cumberland and the county. The air of divisiveness and division between local governments is over. And while there's more work to do, tonight's announcement of a merger between economic development efforts between the city and county is long overdue. In no area is this more important than economic development. There has to be a change in our status quo. Just five years ago, not only did we lack communication between economic development entities, in some instances, we were working against each other and withholding information. Now, not only are we prepared to undertake joint projects, but we will have consolidated into one economic development entity for all of Allegheny County. This will bring a cost savings to all residents, will streamline our structure, and will lead to more accountability and improve our efforts to spur growth and development in our community. This year, the county completed the Economic Development Strategic Plan with the assistance of Thomas P. Miller and Associates. This plan sets a path forward of economic development for our region. Finally, we will have a set of common goals, a plan, and one organization to achieve our desired outcomes. This new entity, the Allegheny Development Corporation, will be tasked with carrying out this plan and projects, and will be measured against the benchmarks and timelines laid out in our report. We must work together in unison if we are to achieve the type of success that our area desperately needs. 2019 was a year of coming together across our community. Leaders empowered our youth and invested in our area's entrepreneurs. Local government on all levels continues a commitment to these themes as we move into a new year. Our community was met with both tragedy and triumph in 2019, and we were all devastated by the news of the closure of the Luke Paper Mill, 130-year institution in our community and was a regional creator of a way of life for many of our citizens. County government led the effort to organize a multi-state resource event that included 70 employers who offered employees jobs on the spot. Working with our state and federal partners, we successfully secured job training and benefits for the affected employees of Verso Corporation, who are now undergoing training at the county's facility, Western Maryland Works. Hunter Douglas celebrated 100 years of innovation this year in Allegheny County. Commissioner Capirelli was on hand to greet workers and company executives who have invested greatly in our community. We honored community heroes like Mr. Floyd Wigfield, a WWII veteran, on the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion. We greatly expanded our OP repair and improvement fund. This year, we allocated $76,000 to assist over 70 residents with the improvement of eight roads, which while they all pay county taxes, they do not receive the benefit of having a county-maintained street. In March, it was recommended that the Board of Education should hire more mental health counselors in middle and high schools to help with the increase in teen suicide and violence. This was offered as a possible use of the $300,000 increase provided by the county to the Board of Education. In November, I'm proud to report, in a compromise and unanimous vote, the Board hired four mental health counselors and four additional school resource officers. In July, we worked with the Health Department to create an online inspections database so the public can view inspection reports and results of all food establishments in the county. And in September, we banned the use of automated speed cameras in Allegheny County. We introduced a Code Home Rule Bill that would ban them on all county-maintained roads. And while bans are in place in some states, Allegheny County is the first county in Maryland to ban the devices. Unlike other counties, Allegheny County isn't going to rely on these cameras to balance our budget. These cameras are about cash, not safety, and they do little to improve driving habits and act only as a tax on motorists everywhere. State of Maryland collected $64 million in revenue from the program in 2018. This year, a number of businesses opened or expanded operations. We welcome the expansions of Toasted Goat, now located at the historic Hotel Gunther. J&amp;J Bates and Frostburg started an axe-throwing range in its existing shop, which is unique to Western Maryland. We also welcome Holy Grounds in Laval, Basecamp Coffee in Cumberland, and Dig Deep Brewing Company in the historic Futterdye Works Building. All of these newer expanding businesses support economic growth and promote the livability of our communities. County government also moved forward on a number of key investments in the future of our community. We announced a partnership with major residential growth at the properly formerly known as Cumberland Chase. And tonight, representatives from Lyons Manor are here to provide more good news on that opportunity for the area's seniors. We established in concert with the State of Maryland and Allegheny County Public Schools a youth apprenticeship initiative for the area's high school seniors. Allegheny County Government and Willett Technology, among others, were the first to give these students a chance to earn while they learn. The Board of County Commissioners established a future fund to utilize economic development funds to seed business attraction and location to the area. The Board also approved the renovation of a facility in Laval to create a first-of-its-kind workforce development space called Western Maryland Works. This facility, which will officially open March 1st of this year, is a partnership with Allegheny College in Maryland and utilized 100% local labor and contractors and is utilizing local vendors for materials. It will also be the training home for the React Robotics team. With each of these investments, we are saying loud and clear that Allegheny County is open for business. We're not interested in placing undue regulatory barriers in front of people who want to realize their dream to start or expand their own business, which may have been done in the past. We promise to work to eliminate as much red tape as possible for residents seeking to build up their home or business in Allegheny County. To that end, the Board of Zoning Appeals, on remand from the Maryland Court of Special Appeals, took up an application for wind technology in Allegheny County. This is why the case was heard again locally. We decided to stand by the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, first when they voted against the windmills and now when they have approved them. This project is supported by every landowner and every adjoining landowner. Let's not forget that Allegheny County is surrounded on three sides by commercial wind farms, with windmills no more than two miles from our borders in three directions, including one in Somerset County, Pennsylvania, 738 feet away. Somerset County, Mineral County, and Garrett County have a combined 297 wind turbines, generating energy, local jobs, and most importantly, tax revenue each day. Garrett County brought in 3.25 million in tax revenue this fiscal year from their wind projects. The proposed $110 million project on Dan's Mountain would bring in an average of 951,000 in tax revenue each of the first 10 years, making it instantly the third-largest tax assessment in the county. This project, which is to be cited on Dan's Mountain, provides much-needed tax revenue for the county and construction jobs for local companies. The Board of County Commissioners was clear: We will not stand in the way of a company seeking to legally construct a project within our borders due to unsubstantiated claims. Our neighboring counties are realizing real revenues due to the development of wind energy in their jurisdiction without any loss of home values. In none of the three neighboring counties has this occurred. Why would we expect it to happen in Allegheny County? This debate on windmills is not about whether they're a good form of energy or whether you like them. The question this board faces is this: We adjoin three counties with 297 windmills, generating millions of dollars a year in tax revenues, which help pay for police, education, infrastructure, and other critical needs. Does Allegheny County want to miss out on this revenue? Even when every landowner and every adjacent landowner approves of this project, should the Board of County Commissioners attempt to nullify private property rights and the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals to fight this project, impurposely miss out on over $9.5 million in revenue over the next decade? As a fiduciary of Allegheny County Government, I believe that it would be detrimental and a disservice for Allegheny County to simply pass on this project and the important revenues associated with it. Securing new businesses and new streams of revenue is how we build a secure future for our community. Allegheny County Government has been resolute in planning for tomorrow. We've expanded the state's enterprise zone designation for the community to include Barton Business Park. We established a get-to-work program that meets the needs of our businesses in the North Branch Industrial Park, and commissioned a concept of operations study for an autonomous vehicle center in partnership with Frostburg State University. We provided community enhancement funds for both Cumberland and Frostburg to facilitate their blight removal and growth opportunities. And we established a three-year contract with the Greater Cumberland Raceway. In addition to the traditional grants for EMS and public works, we received a $3.2 million grant in funding for various projects across the county, and that was one. This included over $700,000 for public safety, law enforcement, and opioid response. While we have a glimpse of some light at the end of the tunnel, the effects of the Verso closure are yet to be seen. With mandates from the state looming, such as minimum wage, which increased again January 1st of this year, and the future passage of the Kerwin Commission's recommendations, we will move forward conservatively and make tough decisions required to balance a budget without tax increases. We will make cuts if necessary without government, instead of asking taxpayers to pay more each year. In closing, I would like to quote from a history of Allegheny County: "While it was written 44 years ago, it remains as accurate today as it was then." Another attitude which has retarded development in this area is a mental isolationism. Afraid of change, many people have attempted to preserve Allegheny County as it's been in its past, rather than to allow it to move in the future. These isolationists are often complacent and proud that the region's been spared many of the ailments of modern American society. It's certainly true that Allegheny County was a pleasant place to live, free of rampant crime, pollution, overcrowding, filth, and impersonality of urban areas. It's also true that, however, that some change is unquestionably necessary in order to solve the region's acute problems. Thank you all. Okay, item number one tonight, we have the Lyons Manor Board regarding Cumberland Chase. We have Mr. John Emmerich and Mr. Ed Crossland and some other folks, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Emmerich and I are here on behalf of the Board, the Lyons Center for Rehabilitation, Extended Care. We have another Board member, Al Feldstein, who's present here in the audience. And I think Mr. Emmerich is going to defer to me on this. Although the Lyons Center is not a public entity, we are a private charity, we did feel it was appropriate for us to address this matter first to the county today. It's been addressed to our employees today by the administration of Lyons Center, and we wanted to address it to the county because it works into the issue of the Cumberland Chase development that Commissioner Shea just spoke about. For several years, the Board of Directors of the Lyons Center has struggled with a substantial increase in the regulations on nursing homes, decrease in Medicare payments, and a very substantial decrease in private-paid clients. As most of you know, the cost of a nursing home stay is quite extensive. We have very, very few private-paid clients. We are not alone in that position. Most nursing homes now have very few private-paid clients. And, as always, an ever-increasing set of costs of operation. While we are currently able to maintain our existing facility, the Board's ability to make long-term plans has been increasingly difficult, especially in the past couple years. As a nonprofit nursing home, Lyons is not alone in this situation. Over the past decade, these decreased revenues and the costs have resulted in a rapid consolidation of nursing homes. In fact, Lyons remains one of the very few nonprofit nursing homes in existence in the area. Lyons was originally founded in 1960 as a 501(c)(3) charity, which we maintain. It was founded by a group of dedicated citizens here in Allegheny County, particularly because at the time, the only other nursing facility was the county home. And as you're likely aware, there was a change in the '50s and '60s in the care of the elderly when it left the home and ended up being more folks going to nursing homes. Lyons facility was constructed on Haystack Mountain, which you're familiar with, and it now needs to be replaced. We have feasibility studies, and I have one with me going all the way back to 2011, of the cost of trying to replace the facility, and particularly now with the sudden cash flow projections, which are decreasing, again primarily because of Medicare reimbursement regulations. These have placed a lot of pressure on the Board to try to determine what to do with the facility, whether to replace it there, whether to build a new one in another location. We've looked at other locations, but frankly, at this point in time, the Board has reached a conclusion that it is not feasible for us to build a new facility. We have a 101-bed facility there. This Board at Lyons is a Board of Volunteers. None of us receive any pay, civic business leaders, community leaders. And federal regulations, the same federal regulations that are decreasing Medicare payments, which are leftover Obamacare regulations, which have been delayed now for two years by the current administration, but we're not sure how long they'll be delayed, are going to increasingly put a lot more obligation on the directors of nursing homes. And whenever we began to look at some of the restrictions that are going to be put on the directors, and more importantly, the liability that comes to the directors, our ability to obtain directors for a nonprofit charity where there's no payment and to accept liability for care in a nursing home is going to result in practically no one wanting to serve on that Board. Again, we've spared it the past two years, it's just a delay in the implementation of regulations. There has been no reversal of those regulations. The Board, having explored all these relevant options concerning the future, has concluded that while we do believe that it is important for the Board to continue its function to protect to the extent that we can and ensure the care of our citizens, it's, again, not feasible for us to continue to operate. Therefore, in December of this year, the Board executed a letter of intent with the principles of the Cumberland Chase development at the Barton Farm near Rawlings, that will, if implemented, provide for the sale of the beds and the assets of the Lyons Manor to the newly-formed organization that will be constructing a new long-term care and assisted living facility at the Cumberland Chase property. If implemented, these assets will be utilized in the development of a larger complex that will include very much-needed individual residential housing for retired persons. Just as an aside, I cannot emphasize how important that is for the county going down the road. I live just off a seat in your ride. There are two houses near me empty by folks who have been long-term, lifelong residents of Allegheny County, who have had to leave the area. One in particular is in a facility exactly like we are intending to have constructed here in Bedford, and would love to have had a facility in Cumberland so they didn't have to leave Allegheny County. So I can tell you that this is very much needed here in the county. Once all that occurs, the current operations of the current Lyons facility will come to an end. Again, though, the Board recognizes its need to contribute to charitable care. Obviously, the Board will recognize some revenues from the sale of the assets, as well as the assets that we currently have. Accordingly, the Lyons Board has formed recently the Lyons Center Foundation Incorporated to serve as a nonprofit corporation qualified, and we see no issue why it won't qualify as a 501(c)(3) charity, to allow us to continue to use our resources to serve the elderly. Once we're freed from the burden of the daily operations of this aging nursing home, the Board believes that change will have greater flexibility for us to direct resources to address the needs and improve the quality of life of the residents and the elderly in the community. In addition, this foundation, it will have some ownership interest and participate in the design and the operation of the new facility, with the expectation and hope that it will provide a comfortable stay for the residents in a welcoming and pleasant environment. There will be no change in the daily operations of Lyons as it exists now, we anticipate, until probably 2022. Based upon very extensive and lengthy negotiations that have been ongoing with the principles of the new facility, and I acknowledge Mr. Metz and Mr. Wymer, who are present here today and who have been extremely cooperative with us, as well as the ongoing cooperation of the Allegheny County Government, particularly Mr. Butler, who's been extremely, extremely helpful in assisting, almost as a mediator at times, with various issues regarding this relatively complex and new type of an entity that's being proposed. We believe that this is going to put Allegheny County and Lyons, the Lyons Foundation, kind of on a new paradigm in the care of elderly. And I say that because, just for an example, Medicare regulations will oftentimes not allow the purchase of an upgraded-type bed for someone who may have a bed sore, simply because they may not weigh enough, they may not have a certain condition. And so, you may have a patient who needs a bed, a specialized bed, but you can't buy it because Medicare won't allow it. What our anticipation is, is that the newly-formed foundation, we will be able to take our share of the revenues and be able to go in and purchase those beds and fill those gaps between Medicare and family to provide better care for the residents of Allegheny County and fulfill our obligations. We're very excited about the proposed development of Cumberland Chase property. We believe it's not only going to provide the greater tri-state's premier campus for the care of the elderly, but we believe also that it will be a substantial boost to the economy, to the community, and to the county. Having said that, I'll defer Mr. Emmerich as the Board President, if he has any other things to add.
I'd like to, I mean, we're really sort of proud and happy that we're able to partake in this project. As Ed indicated, we see a lot of benefits to the public, to the county, actually to the area. Ed had mentioned that facility in Bedford, Pennsylvania. Anyone that's familiar with it, it's, you know, really nice. It's a first-class facility. It's just about full right now. And, you know, it's a shame that we haven't been able to get something like that in this area. So, like I say, you know, we're glad to be able to put our small part into this and make it, you know, a much bigger and broader project. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're looking forward to this.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Brody, thank you for all of your involvement for a very long time, and to finally see some positive movement on Cumberland Chase is exciting. Okay. Item number two is a proclamation for the Census Day 2020. We have Ms. Tanya Gomer and Mr. David Nedved, our county co-chairs.
The founding fathers saw the importance of collecting data, and it is actually in the Constitution, and it is mandated. And every 10 years, we collect data, and it is very important for the running of the government, the running of the economy. You just can't beat it. If Target's thinking about locating here, they're going to look at data. If the government's trying to figure out how to get grant money or where the grant money should go, they're going to look at data. If citizens are trying to figure out the neighborhood they want to live in or the schools they're looking at, it's data. Everything is about data. It all comes down to, every debate has to start with data. So this is a pretty basic thing, and it's a patriotic duty. So we're asking people to complete the census, and we want to get the census count up to 100% participation. There's 435 U.S. Representatives in the Congress, and there won't be any more than that, at least, there doesn't appear to be any more in the near future. So when you count all the people in our district and you count them fully, that gives us more representation in the, excuse me, in the U.S. Congress. We have, Allegheny County has a complete census count committee, and it'll next meet again January 21st, but it also, then after that, will meet February 18th, March 17th, April 20th, May 19th, June 16th, and July 21st. Anybody's more than welcome to attend. The mailing for the census will go out March 12th, and the official day of the census count is April 1st. The regional census office opened just today, had a grand opening just today, which Tanya and I attended, in Hagerstown. So things are getting, raring to go. We're getting geared up here. And I'll let Tanya take over.
As Mr. Nedved said, we are kind of all hands on deck right now in Allegheny County for the census. We have taken what we've received from census from the federal level and also from Maryland Department of Planning, but we've also put our own spin on things. So we've kind of taken ownership that way. When we're interacting with the community, they can see that this isn't top-fed-down, that we've taken ownership and we're going to address things more directly. So with the census, there are some things we need to know. We want everyone to count once, only once, and in the right place. And like Mr. Nedved said, it is about fair representation in the House of Representatives because however many seats we have are going to be contingent upon how the districts are drawn and the population. It is in the U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, that says we will conduct a census, and we've been doing this every 10 years since 1790. It's also about redistricting. Everyone knows that Allegheny County is kind of in a weird, wonky district whenever they pair us up with some of our neighbors downstate. So having our census count to accurately reflect our community is very, very important when it comes to redistricting. It's a civic duty to complete your census, because we need to know where everyone is to make sure that we are getting our fair share. And it's really about the $675 billion that is up for grabs from the federal level. Responding to your census is really important. The first mailing of five will start on March 12th. That'll be the first postcard mailings. And it is so important for people to respond because first responders and law enforcement funding, schools and special education funding, public works projects for what are in sewer, Medicare programs, senior housing, homelessness, libraries, community centers, our food stamps, supplemental nutrition assistance programs, free and reduced meals in schools, employment programs, and substance abuse prevention and treatment are all part of census data. And my wheelhouse, grants, grants, grants. Every grant is all about data. So I need census data so we can apply for these funding sources. Responding is going to be easy this year. This is the first time ever that we will be able to complete the census online. So when the first mailing goes out March 12th, there'll be a postcard that'll have a website on it and a unique identifier code. People can go right online to the census website, takes about 10 minutes, they'll be able to complete their census. If they don't feel comfortable with doing If they don't feel comfortable with doing it online, or have a barrier, because we do know that connectivity is an issue in some areas in our community, they can call in and do their census by phone. And then, the third option is still on the table, and we will still have a mail option for a paper pencil method. And people that don't do any of those three, they're not off the hook, because from May to July, we will have people going out knocking door to door, saying, "Here, do your census." And then they'll have the tools available to help them work through that. The Western Regional Office for the Census did open today, and it represents six western counties, and they will have over 1,800 census workers, local people working in our community, out there being enumerators and poll takers. So, the goal is for every county is to hire census workers from that county. So, we're going to get people to work. And the pay is really, really good. Responding to the census is safe. Personal information is kept confidential by law. No one can use the data reported on your census. It's only used to do the statistics. It's going to be all about the numbers. Information cannot be shared with any law enforcement or government agency, or any court in any way. Some people are afraid to complete their census because of citizenship status or family situation. It doesn't matter. Census data is sealed for 72 years, and even the President of the United States, or ex-President of the United States, cannot get that information if they want to go buy a piece of property in Martha's Vineyard. I can say that. What does this mean for Allegheny County? In 2000, we had a 77% completion rate. In that time, we missed out on $11.1 million. In 2010, we dropped down to a 75% completion rate. We missed out on $24.3 million. So, if we follow this trend, and we only have 75% completion rate, we're going to leave over $32 million on the table. So, for something that takes 10 minutes, we ask that you do the census. And this is a sample of some of the local media that we are going to have out blanketing our community. This is going to be a flyer that we're going to have everywhere, doctors' offices, public service buildings. We're going to have all kinds of swag out there. We're going to have business cards. We have our Facebook and Twitter account, which are active right now. Our website will be active very, very soon. And we encourage everyone, when they see it, to talk about it and dispel the rumors that doing your census is bad. And April 1st is our Census Day. So, we want to know where everybody is, where they live on April 1st. So, if you have college students, wherever they reside on April 1st, that's where the census wants you to be counted. So, with that being said, we have some swag for everyone.
Even if we didn't fill ours out yet.
Even if you didn't fill it out.
Look out. Thank you.
Could use that for swearing in.
And we do have a proclamation for you all, if you come one up.
Chris Farrell, he is our regional census liaison. We rely on Chris a lot.
Please, come one up.
Where are you going to go?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
This is an official proclamation that reads, "Allegheny County Government wishes to highlight the upcoming United States 2020 census and emphasize the importance of each county resident participating in it. Allegheny County's partition, participation rate is critical. If the participation rate merely matches the 75% of 2010, the county will lose $1,825 per person every year over the next 10 years. We, the Board of County Commissioners, do proclaim April 1st, 2020 to be United States Census Day, and the month April 2020 to be United States Census Month in Allegheny County. Signed, all three Commissioners, Creed Brody, Dave Capirelli, Jake Shade." Thank you all.
Thank you.
If, just for one second, I could address the Commissioners. On behalf of Fernando Armstrong, which is the Regional Director of the Philadelphia Office, which covers the United States region, which includes Maryland, we thank you for that proclamation. It is of the utmost importance. We will be hiring local. Those numbers are yet to be determined, yet on projected rates of response. But it is, and I am the co-rural lead for the state of Maryland, the veteran lead for the state of Maryland, for the U.S. Census Bureau. I am a born and raised Allegheny County resident, and as of a month ago, an Allegheny County resident again. So, it took a little stint in the Army there for a couple decades. But, so, there's a vested interest for everyone in this room. I just want you to understand that, yes, I work for the U.S. Federal Government, but I am an Allegheny County resident. I have a vested interest in this, too. If anyone on the, anyone on the Commissioners, do you have any point in time, you have any questions census-based, you want any information, you whatever, Tanya and David have all my contact, and it was monthly, now it's weekly, it's almost daily at this point. So, feel free to reach out, and we will do everything that we can do as the U.S. Census Bureau to ensure that there's a proper and accurate count. Wonderful. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question on this?
If, you want to wait till the end, maybe? You can, they're going to wait. I, I think they're going to stay till the end. Well, we, we got a, we got a long agenda tonight. Okay. Item number three is a public hearing for an act to repeal, reenact Chapter 325. This involves floodplain management. We have Ms. Amy Stone, Ms. Amy Stonebreaker and Director Angela Patterson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks a ton. Again, I'm here tonight as part of the public hearing for Code Home Rule Bill 3-19, an act to repeal, reenact, local law, Chapter 325, Allegheny County's floodplain management regulations. So, why are the floodplain management regulations being updated? FEMA requires that our local law be updated concurrently with the revised flood maps. As you're probably aware, the flood maps are slated to be approved and adopted April 3rd, 2020. Compliance with the FEMA, compliance with FEMA provides our community with the opportunity to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which provides our stakeholders and property owners reasonable flood insurance rates. As part of reviewing the floodplain management regulations, we formed a committee called the Floodplain Management Ordinance Review Committee. This committee made suggestions on topics which were recommendations in the Maryland, in the Maryland Model Ordinance. County regulations were updated accordingly. Committee representatives were from Allegheny County Government, Cities of Frostburg and Cumberland, the Maryland Department of the Environment, and Bennett Brewer &amp; Associates. Some notable changes to the floodplain management regulations include the flood protection elevation. Recommendations devised by the committee were one foot of freeboard, whereas the Maryland Model Ordinance suggested two feet. By keeping the minimum, this provides the stakeholder the opportunity to, to choose how high they want to build. Size limitation of detached garages and accessory structures. The committee recommended a structure greater than 600 square feet. Elevations required, but no variance procedure is necessary. The Maryland Model Ordinance recommended a variance procedure. The committee did not recommend that variance procedure. Elevation certificates will be required to ensure building is elevated properly. A structure less than 600 square feet requires no elevation. This is a table devised for the understanding of the changes in regulating accessory structures and detached garages in the floodplain. So, currently, existing requirements exempt from elevating to the flood protection elevation. Anything less than 900 square feet is exempt from elevating to the flood protection elevation. The Maryland Model Ordinance recommended anything less than 300 square feet was exempt. Anything greater, you had to go through elevation, or exempt. Proposed requirements, anything less than 600 square feet, you're exempt from elevating. The provision for variance procedure to determine exemption from flood protection elevation requirement, anything greater than 900 square feet is what the regulations, current regulations indicate. Recommended by the Maryland Model Ordinance, anything between 300, 600 square feet would have to go through the variance procedure. Required to elevate to flood protection elevation, there's nothing in our existing requirements. Recommended by the Maryland Model Ordinance, anything greater than 600 square feet, whereas proposed requirements is also greater than 600 square feet. Other two notable changes to the floodplain management regulations, ag buildings. The, the committee made a definition, or definitions, also created regulations and criteria that must be met in order to qualify as an ag building. We are the only county in Maryland that have devised specific regulations to accommodate agricultural buildings. However, variance procedure is required. Violations and penalties. We currently do not have any violations in our current floodplain management regulations, but the committee recommended a fine of $500, which is similar to neighboring counties as well. On November 20th, 2019, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. We received zero comments at the public hearing, and the Planning Commission then recommended to the Board of Commissioners to adopt the regulations. Currently, the county legal department is reviewing the model resolutions from municipalities to adopt our floodplain management regulations by reference. Allegheny County and our municipalities must have floodplain regulations adopted by April 3rd, 2020, for them to become effective. Any questions?
Great. I, I know we've discussed this at length many, many times. Amy, thank you for your work on this, and Angie, same with you. It's a, it's a very long time coming. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the floodplain regulations? Okay. Thank you. We, can we take action tonight?
Yes, Commissioners. This was first brought before you on November 20th. Proper notice has been given. We're here on a legislative day. You're, you're free to take action to enact this legislation.
Great. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Easy as that, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of easier than that, moving to our action agenda. Item number four is an MOU with Cumberland Economic Development Commission, CEDC, the City of Cumberland, and the Board of County Commissioners. This is another thing, very long time coming, easier said than done. What this does is consolidate our economic development efforts into one entity. It'll be jointly run between the City of Cumberland and Allegheny County Government. And I think the key of it is, it's, it's getting everyone on the same page. We're, we're going to have one set of priorities, one point of contact, and it, and it creates not just the accountability, but, but it also saves a little bit of taxpayer money that we're, we're combining services. So, tonight, we have, Mr. Paul Kelly is here, and Mr. Jonathan Hutcherson is the, is the Chairman of the CEDC Board. If you'd like to say a few words, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Hutcherson, and I'm speaking this evening as Chairman of the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Five years ago, the CEDC was formed as a public-private partnership comprised of business leaders from our community and representatives from the City of Cumberland. Our mission's pretty simple. It's to create the environment and opportunities to facilitate and foster economic growth regionally, to support the development and expansion of our local businesses, and to attract new companies to the region. The Board of Directors is extremely pleased to have this memorandum of understanding between our organization, the City of Cumberland, and Allegheny County nearly complete. Those were, excuse me, those who were involved, going back to about late 2014, even before the official formation of the CEDC, will remember that having a county-wide economic development engine has always been part of the greater strategy. In the last 12 to 18 months, a very positive change has taken place, one that's not always been most visible to the, the public. And our economic development stakeholders, including the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, Allegheny County Economic Development, City of Frostburg, Frostburg State University, Allegheny College of Maryland, and the Chamber of Commerce, are all working in a consolidated and coordinated effort, a shared vision, if you will, to support local businesses and attract new ones. That includes consulting on multiple, multiple occasions with local workgroups, such as the Manufacturers Roundtable, or the IT Center of Excellence, regional partners such as the I-68 Regional Alliance, our state delegation, and various Maryland Secretaries and their departments. An example of this is, and Paul just gave me permission to say this, but we had a working group that worked on attracting Clorox to our region for well over six months. Our Board of Directors wishes to thank Cumberland Mayor Ray Morris, City Council members Roxioni, Seth Bernard, Eugene Fraser, and Laurie Marquini for having the vision to realize that this organization will be able to do more for the City of Cumberland when working as part of a larger effort than when acting independently. We wish to thank Allegheny County Commissioners Jake Shade, Creed Brody, and Dave Capirelli for their support and their drive in making this a reality. This is a big deal. It's a big deal for the City of Cumberland, it's a big deal for the county, and all the municipalities like Westernport, and Rawlins, and Barton, and Lonaconing, and Midland. For the first time in quite a few years, possibly decades, all of the economic development resources of both the City of Cumberland and Allegheny County will be combined into a single entity that will cut through the red tape and rapidly provide businesses the tools they need to build, grow, and create jobs in our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Commissioners.
Nothing to add. You know, I was there at the beginning, the CEDC with the City of Cumberland. I have seen it grow over the years. We've been talking about this for a number of years, I think even before I was on the City Council in Cumberland. So, I'm very excited to see this process be completed.
Absolutely. And, and again, consolidation is something that, that we hear in public again, again, and again. It's easier said than done, and this process certainly was, was a, a long one, but we wanted to make sure we got it right, and I think we did. And I, I think everyone's going to undoubtedly benefit from, from this arrangement. So, with that, I'll make the motion to approve the MOU. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Item number five is Fiscal 2020 Rural Legacy Program Agreement. Ms. Sierra Wigfield.
Good evening. So, the Rural Legacy Mountain Ridge area is an area from Mount Savage through, like, Piney Mountain, all the way to Dan's Mountain, and it's a contiguous area. The program is for willing landowners to sell their development rights. And this year, we have, the Board of Public Works approved our grant, and so this is the grant agreement for that program. And so, I'm asking the Commissioners to sign that.
Great. Is there any discussion on the Rural Legacy Agreement? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All righty. Item number six is a MOU with Allegheny County Task Force on Child Abuse and Neglect, Jane's Place, and the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Butler?
Oh, Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll start off, and then I'm going to defer over to Ms. Karen Johnson and Ms. Mary Beth Perlazi. Also in the audience tonight is Ms. Chrissy Ujic. So, Commissioners, to echo the, the words of Commissioner President, consolidation is, seems to be the theme of the evening, and this is one of those that makes, makes a lot of sense. So, there are two various groups in Allegheny County that have been working, working together on the very important subject of child abuse and neglect. Jane's Place, as well as the Allegheny County Task Force. Ms. Ujic, Commissioners, as you recall, really during our budget hearings, came in and really spoke passionately-
Place, and the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Butler?
Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll start off, and then I'm going to defer over to Ms. Karen Johnson and Ms. Mary Beth Perla-Zi. Also in the audience tonight is Ms. Chrissy Ujic. So Commissioners, to echo the words of Commissioner President, consolidation is, seems to be the theme of the evening, and this is one of those that makes a lot of sense. So, there are two various groups in Allegheny County that have been working together on the very important subject of child abuse and neglect. Jane's Place, as well as the Allegheny County Task Force. Ms. Ujic, Commissioners, as you recall, really during our budget hearings, came in and really spoke passionately about some of these schools and some of the children that she encounters on a regular basis. And honestly, Commissioners, I could not, I do not envy the work of either of these boards. And so, tonight, we have been talking about this now for a few months, and luckily, it is coming to fruition here. So Commissioners, just so you know, this is zero spend for the county, but it does provide funding that works for our community, and it allows for grant opportunities to increase because of this partnership. And with that, I'd like to turn it over if you gentlemen would entertain just for a few moments here, Ms. Karen Johnson and Ms. Mary Beth Perla-Zi.
Well, good evening. It's nice to see all of you this evening. I feel like a fish out of water, because I was the newest member of the Board of this Allegheny County Task Force, but I've had the pleasure of working with Karen Johnson, who is the Chair of Jane's Place, and with Chrissy. But I, on behalf of the Task Force, which is the Allegheny County Task Force on Child Abuse and Neglect, we feel that this move is very, very important, because it will allow for the resources to be leveraged, to be able to do so much more for the protection and safety of our children here in this community. But I don't want you to think for one second that the mission of our Task Force is going to go by the wayside, because if you remember from its inception, back at the time with Carol San Giovanni, she was instrumental in raising awareness and providing education and coordinating community-based programs with the available resources for the prevention and intervention of child abuse and neglect. And this mission will absolutely continue. Our mission, and that of Jane's Place, has overlapped for many years, which is the reason why we are here today. With the designation now of Jane's Place as a child advocacy center, which allows many more opportunities for our Allegheny County and their recent accreditation, it is in the best interest of our community to join together so that we will coordinate all of these efforts under one umbrella. Chrissy Ujic, Chrissy, if you'll stand, because many of you recognize the face of Chrissy, who has been near and dear to the hearts of children here in this community, and I want you to know that she will be continuing to provide educational outreach to our schoolchildren and to our community organizations under this merger. So we appreciate the support of you, the Commissioners, and we thank Jane's Place for working with us, and Karen Johnson, who has been really diligent with us, and Brandon Butler, I have to give you a great debt of thanks, because you have worked with our Task Force in making this happen, and I thank all of you for allowing us to do so much and keeping our children safe here in this community. So I thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Karen?
I can, I'm Karen Johnson, and hello, Commissioners. I can only echo what Mary Beth is saying. We actually started talking about this about a year and a half ago, the two boards talking about, and from the beginning, we felt that it would be an improvement for the children and bring benefit to the kids of this county. But as with everything, it takes a while to work out the bugs and to make sure that we're fair to everyone and that we're coming up with a good solution, and we really feel we have one. So, thank you for your consideration.
Wonderful. Thank you for all your effort on this. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go, three, zero.
Three, zero.
Okay. Moving on to our voluminous consent agenda tonight. Mr. Butler, we'll be quick. Commissioners, item number seven is the Allegheny County On-Call Planning and Engineering Services Contract Award. Item number eight is Recovery Processing Reporting and Marketing of Recyclable Materials Contract Renewal. Item number nine is a consulting agreement with Atkinson Eco LLC. Item number 10 is a training site agreement for BLS and Advanced Cardiac Life Support and Pediatric Advanced Life Support Training. Item number 11 is a Local Emergency Planning Committee Officers. Item 12 are appointments to the Emergency Services Board. Item 13 is a purchase of Computer-Aided Dispatch for 911 Joint Communication Center. Item number 14 is a purchase for Emergency Ambulance for Emergency Medical Services Division. And Commissioners, note as well that those are both covered under the Capital Improvement Plan, as well as the bond issuance that was recently done as of, I believe, last year. And finally, item 15 is the Allegheny County Mental Health Advisory Board Appointments. And finally, item number 16, bringing up the rear, is the Declaration of Surplus Vehicle. All righty. There's a dump truck for sale? You'd think Motorola, after you spend 10 million, they might give us like 1% off or something, but I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do have several people signed up to speak tonight. First is Mr. Robbie May.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Robbie May, and I'm here today on behalf of the EMS Subcommittee of the Allegheny County Emergency Services Board. I've been a member of the Volunteer Emergency Services in Allegheny County for the past 15 years, and I'm currently a volunteer paramedic with Corganville Volunteer Fire Company. I come from a family with a long history of volunteering in Allegheny County's emergency services, going back to both great-grandparents on both of the sides of the family. I currently serve as the EMS captain at Corganville, and I also teach emergency medical technician classes with the University of Maryland. Managing a county with finite resources, which is what we have in Allegheny County, is one which I don't envy you for. I know that it must be more difficult for you when you're presented with some of the unique challenges that Allegheny County has, and I sincerely appreciate the difficult job which you have stepped up to do, and I don't envy the stress that you undoubtedly face, especially in a challenging budget cycle. I come here to you today because myself, and my colleagues, and the emergency medical services across the county are deeply concerned about the safety of our public and our communities when it comes to medical emergencies. It's no surprise, and we are all well aware, that volunteerism has dramatically dropped within our ranks. It's a nationwide issue, and it is not unique to Allegheny County. On average, we're only producing 15 to 20 new EMTs a year in Allegheny County. However, statistics show that almost half of them will no longer be volunteering within five years of earning that certification. As a result, you've worked closely with us to expand the EMS division of the Department of Emergency Services over the last decade, something that if you had not helped us to do, there would be citizens who would most definitely have lost their lives. Because of the ever-quickly decreasing number of volunteers, especially on the EMS side, more and more stations in the county have requested DES to fully or partially staff their stations. Currently, you're fully staffing, meaning a paramedic and an EMT driver, four stations, and partially staffing with either a paramedic or an EMT driver, five stations. I know that there are other stations who do not currently have staffing or have partial staffing, and are now requesting additional staffing due to their volunteer numbers. At the same time, it's unfortunately the opinion of the EMS Subcommittee that DES's EMS division is not being provided with the adequate resources in order to appropriately staff the current stations, which Allegheny County Government has memorandums of understandings with, which to provide promised staff. As a result, in recent months, it has become a multi-day occurrence each week for volunteer stations to be shut down, because DES does not have the staff available to staff their stations, which they've entered agreements into. This is due to a plethora of reasons, including sick, providers sick and on maternity leave, call-offs, disciplinary actions where the medical director has suspended a license of a provider, as well as a hemorrhage of clinicians who are leaving DES to work for other agencies who pay more. For example, a starting paramedic for DES makes about $20 an hour. If they leave to work locally for Butler Medical Transport, for example, they can start at $25 to $28 an hour. Soon, starting EMTs will be better off to work at McDonald's, because the state legislator has decided to increase the minimum wage. In the last week, staffing has been pooled from Flintstone, Mount Savage, and Corganville to fill stations which statistically have higher call volumes. Over the last several months, this has occurred multiple times. While it certainly makes sense to pool our scarce resources to stations who historically utilize them the most, what does this say to our citizens who are in those areas alone that make up more than half of the county geographically, who need emergency care and now have to wait an extended period of time because of the ruralness of their region? All three companies have first due areas which one run well into Pennsylvania, meaning that we are the closest EMS company to those people. Some locations take up almost 40 minutes to get even an emergency vehicle there. Instead, for example, a resident north of Ellersley on Palo Alto Road will have to wait almost an hour for an ambulance to arrive out of LaVale or Frostburg. If there really, truly is an emergency, that person cannot wait that long. At Corganville, on the days which we've lost a provider, and it's not a school day, I volunteered to cover 24-hour shifts at the station. In fact, one of those days, Christmas Eve actually, I ran five different calls, two of which were critically ill patients. What would have happened if I had not been available? It's easy for the person who is on the front line to say, "Well, those are not citizens of our county or our state, so it's not our problem." What if the other states and counties said the same thing? When Tri-Town needs help from Kaiser, Crescent Town needs help from Short Gap, Frostburg needs help from Eastern Garrett, Mount Savage needs help from Wellersburg, and on and on? Healthcare can't be a political issue, especially emergency healthcare. We live in rural Appalachia, and as a result, when it comes to EMS and the pure distance between towns, as well as the ever-decreasing number of EMTs and paramedics, states and counties have to help one another out. As both a teacher at Fort Hill High School and as a volunteer paramedic, I closely watched the county budget cycle and the discussions around funding. All three of you know that I've been critical of DES budget over the past year. Several months ago, I was able to meet with Director Piles and Chief Biggs to clear up some of my concerns. However, I realized just how, just as my fellow volunteers do, that Allegheny County is a combination system, and that we as volunteer stations can no more function on our own without your assistance and staffing than you can function as DES without our assistance with volunteer staffing, housing, ambulances, and equipment. For last year, for example, Corganville ran 400, excuse me, 564 EMS calls, of which on 563 of, we provided a volunteer driver. I've read many times in the newspapers of your desire not to see an increase in the DES budget, and I'm here to tell you on behalf of all the emergency service organizations in Allegheny County that it's just not simply possible. I have no doubt that next to education, emergency services will become the biggest part of your annual budget within the next few years, as you have seen it bloom, and the number is going to have to be much higher than where it is now. There are several volunteer EMS organizations that are currently on the verge of collapse, and some are only being kept from collapse due to your assistance with staffing. If they collapse, you'll be forced to spend significant money, as you had to do with Frostburg, taking over the costs of not just staffing, but ambulances, equipment, and buildings. Budgeting in tight fiscal times, which I would argue is the permanent state of our budget, is incredibly tough, which means that you have to make tough decisions about things that absolutely matter most, and it's our firm belief that EMS, which, and that you would agree, that human lives must be our most important priority. We as a committee are urging you to immediately release funding and permission for DES to hire much-needed staffing, so that these life-threatening staff shortages do not continue to endanger the lives of citizens, so that departments do not collapse, placing huge financial burdens on the government. In addition, we urge you to see the reality that EMS in Allegheny County is now and will be in the future a big part of the budget and cannot be decreased. We're cognizant that funds are finite, and that funds are becoming increasingly endangered as the needs of so many agencies are increasing, so hard decisions are going to have to be made by brave leaders. While no one likes to hear the word taxes, as the county continues to take on a greater role in EMS, and as our population continues to age, as the drug epidemic continues to ravage our area, and as the overall call volume continues to increase exponentially, it may very well be time to consider emergency service tax. The addition does not, or the answer does not fall dramatically increasing on the percentage of insurance money collected from each call, which currently falls at anywhere between 35 to 50%, depending on how much staffing you provide, and has been discussed raising anywhere from 50 to 80%. At that high of a rate, we as companies are no longer able to pay to repair our ambulances, provide equipment, and pay utilities in the building, which our county paid staff utilizes. At a time where a large percentage of patients don't have health insurance, thus we never recoup the cost of medicine supplies, where Medicaid pays a flat $100 rate per patient, and the cost of equipment is increasing rapidly, it's not possible to keep up. The following, and lastly, I say on my own and not on behalf of the committee, it may be time to look at appropriations of each emergency service company, and how it relates to the staffing level at each station, and the number of calls which county staffing provide. If the station is getting 100% staffing to that station, and the providers of the county you're providing are providing a larger amount of the calls being run, it may be time to look at that station's appropriations. In additions, it may, in addition, it may be time to consider companies with special taxing districts for emergency services, and how that relates to their appropriation levels. I'm not saying any of this to hurt any company. I 100% agree that no matter what patch you wear on your shoulder, we are all in this together and here to provide the best possible care to our citizens, no matter their location. However, I also realize the financial cliff that you're on. None of what I've said here today on behalf of myself or the committee are going to be popular political decisions and may very well affect electability. However, what I have said to you today is much more important than any of that, because it's the lives of my neighbors, your mother, his grandfather, your child, a friend, and countless more. We're at a historic crossroads for EMS in this county, and we need you to make brave, albeit unpopular, decisions to help with those who need it most. We urge you to begin to think creatively about sitting down at the table with all groups, volunteer organizations, DES, and the union to collaboratively develop a plan to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Randy Apple.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have an issue. I live 10807 Cache Valley Road, and at the top of my driveway on the county property, the water comes up out of the road, and I think Mr. Brody knows what I'm talking about there. I contacted the Vail Sanitary and he said it's not their problem. They said it's a spring underneath the road. It's getting to be very dangerous. In the wintertime, right now, it freezes, and I got pictures, it's a pretty good-sized puddle of water. That water runs down my driveway, and my driveway is fairly steep going down to my house. I called over here to the county roads, and they did come out and put gravel and salt on the ice, which created another problem. When the cars go by, all the salt and gravel comes down my driveway, and it's starting to break my blacktop up in my driveway. If you can do anything to help me with that, I sure would appreciate it. As a matter of fact, my wife fell in the gravel the other day, when they put the gravel on the road there. The other thing is, I want to commend you on the bridge in Little Orleans. Fantastic. Well overdue. You guys did a fantastic job of getting the money for that. I don't know if you dedicate bridges to people, or how you would go about doing that. I'd like to see it dedicated to the veterans of Little Orleans. The reason I'm saying that, because there was a young man, as a kid grew up in Little Orleans, he lived just about a quarter mile from that bridge. That was a swimming hole, a fishing hole, and ice skating rink for all the kids in Little Orleans. He was killed in Vietnam. That's why I'm saying about dedicating that bridge to the veterans memorial. The other thing is, the signs that were up at the end of the bridge, it says Old Town Road to the right, Apple Road to the left. The Apple Road sign has not been put back up yet. I'm just wondering why that has not been put up, or whatever. I know you've got a lot of problems, this is just small things, but I appreciate if you could help me.
Great.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Good one.
Okay. Yeah. Next up, we have Mr. Trevor Labor and Mike Roach, I like to go together on the scenic railroad, it looks like.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you well know, in 2018, brought up the issue of some of the performance issues and operational issues that were plaguing the Western Mount scenic railroad, and an audit was performed, and all that audit brought to light a number of issues that we all seemed to know about and also didn't know about. So, towards the end, and having discussions with other people, me and Mr. Roach here, we had decided to go and form a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit known as the Allegheny Preservation Allegheny Pres- Allegheny Preservation Society's mission statement is to provide for documentation, preservation, interpretation and display, and/or operation of agricultural, mining, and industrial transportation artifacts within Allegheny County and its surrounding areas. We have a bold plan to assist and provide partnerships with other organizations, and to continue the development and provide for operational and educational assistance, also the enlightenment and enjoyment of future generations, and to celebrate the history and preserve the heritage that is the hallmark of Western Maryland. We also have a plan to develop an interpretive museum and cultural center that tells visitors about the history of the area and the industries that played host to Allegheny County, as well as the city of Cumberland, and the effects that it had on the influences for the continuing development of the United States. One of our recent bouts to start this off was, we had submitted to West Virginia a historic property inventory form for the 734 steam locomotive, and that took better part of three to four months to get done. They'd approved it. Now it moves on to, in order to get the engine listed on the National Registry of Historic Places, as a national historic landmark, you need the property owner's permission. And that has presented a problem recently. It's very hard to get ahold of anybody on the Board of Directors. So that is where we stand on that project. We also have looked at providing assistance to the scenic gray road, and that has fallen on deaf ears at least twice, on their behalf, not anybody else's. Basically, this assistant project would help them provide some of the maintenance with their equipment and the trail maintenance, which everybody, well, Allegheny County takes care of because they own the right-of-way. This would include us, if we were able to, provide assistance with brush cutting, if the scenic grid would let us do track maintenance, as well as provide maintenance for the equipment that they also operate, which they seem to have an influx of in the yard. As far as our long-term goal in this, we would seek, no, more or less, the fact that you guys, that acknowledge our existence, and that would support what we're trying to accomplish in this with not only getting, you know, like, the locomotive listed on the registry, which would be a great benefit to Allegheny County as well as the state of Maryland, but also to continue to develop and open an interpretive museum and cultural center that we can tell more or less the transportation side of why Allegheny County is important. Mike here, he has been, he's been probably one of the most influential people in this all. Unfortunately, he doesn't live in Allegheny County, but he, from better part of what, Fulton, Maryland? He does all the stuff that we needed to, to get us incorporated within the state. We are a functioning non-for-profit. We do have, you know, federal and state tax exemption services. So, basically, what we're doing is we're just looking for the support in this to keep this project rolling along, because even with all the various museums that sit within the county, each one of them tells a specific story, even in a little bit. Not all of them tell one certain story. So we would like to focus specifically on the transportation aspect of it, and that's where we're at. So we just wanted to at least let you guys know that we do exist, we are 501(c)(3), and this is what we're trying to do. And I don't know if anybody could be of assistance to get, you know, the engine moved towards the National Registry at all, but we shall just go from there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Next up is Mr. Kenneth Wilmot.
I live at 501(c)(3) Fort Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I'm here to speak. I have not been a advocate of the no-kill policy from the day they took over after that voluntary place. But before I start on that, I would like to inform you, I just looked on my computer and stated Maryland, 46 people died from dog attacks. That's 46 people. 65% of those people were children under 10. 33 of the 46 deaths were committed by pit bulls and pit bull mixes. It's obviously clear that there's no control over these animals. Why should a dog be allowed to attack and kill people? Now, if it's 46 in the state of Maryland, what do you think it is all over the states? In every state? If you follow it and you get on that program, horrible, horrible attacks. I'm going to recite one for you. Couple of years ago, a little 19-month-old baby crawled through the doggy door at their house at 6:30 in the morning. An hour later, somebody went looking for this child. They found her out in the backyard in pieces. People had 11 pit bulls. This should never happen. We have an animal control shelter that operates as it very well pleases. A good example of how they work and how they function is right up here at the recycling center. As you go up there, as you drive straight in, stop and look over to your left at the bank, on the bank here, there's five cats living in an 18 or 16-inch sewer pipe. This is, this is just one of many feeding sites or pods as our animal shelter leaders call. They put animals all over the county, and then they feed them on our tax money. Thousands, not hundreds, but thousands. I'm asking you to shut that place down as a no-kill. Hire somebody who has the fortitude and the backbone to put animals down. Nobody likes to kill an animal, myself included. But we have a problem that has completely gotten out of hand. My goodness, every place you look, there's cats running everywhere. Last year, I had, in the winter, I had one redbird in my backyard. I hadn't seen, this winter, I hadn't seen a single redbird. I hadn't seen, in fact, I had seen no birds. Cats, a single cat kills 542 birds a year. So I estimate, just in the city of Cumberland, there's about 40,000 feral cats. At what value are these animals to the taxpayers, to the people who live here? No, they have no value. You need to take a hard course on this animal shelter control. We're paying them to control, reduce the population. There has been absolute zero population. In fact, it's increased. There's no reduction in this. You're wasting your money. These people have been giving you lift serves since the day they took over. Oh, we got a 95% adoption rate. Bullcrap. That's a bunch of baloney. How many? I go to these meetings. I went to the first meeting up in La Velle in January 2011 at Dr. Cosgrove's veterinarian. To a man aboard, everybody there voted against the no-kill. As a consequence, Mr. Valentine, and people were there at that time, well, we control it, not the board, we're going to have a no-kill. So now you've got a situation in your pocket, it's yours, not the taxpayers', you've got to remedy it. We cannot afford to lose our bird population, for crap's sake. They're the ones who protect us against diseases. For instance, just one, one bird eats 2,000 mosquitoes a day. We can't deny that they're doing a good job. I am, I'm all for it. People can have what they want. They can have a herd of elephants, as long as they keep them quiet, they keep them clean, and they keep them on their own property. But they're not doing it. And this statistics on people being killed is an indication somebody has to take some action. I would not allow a pit bull within 1,000 miles of me. They are totally unpredictable. Now, what would cause a pit bull to fight and kill five-week-old babies, 19-month-old babies, children? They're unpredictable. Take some action, for goodness sake. It has to start somewhere. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Okay. Next up is Mr. Edward Giuliano.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Edward Giuliano. I am living at 15121 Trail Ridge Road, Cumberland, Maryland. That's in the Bel Air subdivision. And I'm here tonight to speak against the Dan's Mountain Wind Force wind turbines. I'm on the Executive Board of Anchor, the group which is against construction of the wind turbine industrial park at the top of Dan's Mountain. And I plan on being a regular attendee at the county commissioners' meeting and occasionally speaking on the topic. Today, I would like to talk about the noise aspect of the wind turbines and the lack of community outreach by Dan's Mountain Wind Force, and these two things are related. It's very concerning to me and my neighbors that there's been no attempt at community outreach by Dan's Mountain Wind Force regarding construction of this project. Most of my neighbors had no idea that a wind turbine industrial park was about to be built at the top of Dan's Mountain, about a mile away from their homes. It's about a mile away from my home, too. There's no internet site for Dan's Mountain Wind Force where you can find out more information. There's a Facebook page, there's two postings, one in 2016, one in October of 2019. And as you can imagine, people have a lot of questions about the effect of this project on their homes and on their lives. One of the biggest concerns is the potential noise pollution caused by wind turbines. Yes, wind turbines generate noise, but the noise diminishes as one moves away from the source. Mr. David Friend and Dan's Mountain Wind Force have never offered any comments to allay our concerns that ambient noise levels will dramatically increase for residents of Bel Air after installing these 17 turbines. Since winds are predominantly from the west, the noisy end of the turbine, the back end of the turbine, containing the gearbox and the oil cooler fans, will be facing Bel Air. Bel Air has an exceptionally quiet level of background noise. I'm a native of New York City. I suffer from migraines. I find the level of quiet to be extremely comforting in Bel Air. Will we be able to hear the wind turbines in Bel Air at one mile? We don't know. Dan's Mountain Wind Force knows we are concerned about this. They know about it from the Boza hearing, they know about it from letters to the Public Service Commission, but they've never offered us any assurances that the local noise levels won't be objectionable. Therefore, I must conclude that ambient noise levels will be increasing for us if this project is allowed to proceed. This will have a negative impact on our community, possibly on our health if there are sleep disturbances, and on potential home sales. I also would like to add that I worked for AES Warrior Run, the power plant in Mexico Farms for 12 years. I worked with power plant developers very closely in those 12 years, because AES did a lot of development work, and that would be a cardinal sin for a power plant developer to not communicate with the local constituents, not have an active website, not be going door-to-door, holding public concern issues, public meetings, letting people vent their concerns, trying to mitigate potential effects. I know when we started Warrior Run, we would often have a steam turbine trip, and we'd release high-pressure steam up a vent, and we were, we were, in fact, being very noisy to the local neighbors out there at Mexico Farms, and we spent, we spent a million dollars to put in silencers on that. I was, I was the plant engineer, and I worked day and night to put those silencers on to get the, to get the system quieted down, so we didn't disturb our neighbors. So there, there seems to be a world of difference between that type of power plant development and what's going on with Dan's Mountain Wind Force. Having said all that, I want to be respectful of your time, and I know I'm probably one of the last ones to speak here. I would just ask that you try to rethink your support on this project, ask a lot of questions, and during future meetings, I hope to address you again.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Maybe we could arrange some sort of meeting out there with, with Dan's Mountain Wind Force in Bel Air? I mean, would that, you think that would be helpful to some of your concerns and the people there?
It might, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
We can certainly, we can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Beaven.
Gentlemen, just while we had Jane's Place and the Allegheny County Child Abuse Task Force here tonight, I just want to make sure you gentlemen understand what an asset we have here. As you know, I practice in multiple states, multiple areas, and it really, truly is a one-of-a-kind resource that we have here, so definitely not one to be taken advantage of or taken lightly.
Great. And Lee, thank you for filling in our thoughts with Mr. Rudd, and we hope he, we hope he's well. So, all right. Mr. Butler.
In the words of Mr. Rudd, "I have nothing."
Great. Commissioner Caprilli.
Nothing to add tonight.
Commissioner Brody.
Sir, I do. We're going to have a good week coming up in front of us. We're getting ready to head down to Pace. We're, a lot of our projects that we get to do all year, our funding sources start there, so hopefully at the end of that, when we come back, we'll have some good news on some future funding moving forward in Allegheny County. Our team has always been quite successful bringing back a large sum of money. With one more thing being said tonight before the meeting, I do need your permission and some help with something with, now that it's official, the Cumberland Chase project is moving forward, I need to look at some pricing to get the water and sewer availability there to them. So if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I need some help. We'd like to see what this is going to cost us, because we know we've got to get water properly without water and sewer on, it's really not very valuable.
Absolutely. Please, take the lead on that one. Okay.
Commissioners, actually, if we can put that in a motion, form of a motion, so that we can, we could get moving, because it would potentially require an appropriation of funds.
All right. We can, we'll make the motion tonight, and then when we have an actual number, we'll vote again. So is there a motion for Cumberland Chase Water and Sewer?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, you've heard enough from us tonight. Our next public business meeting will be Thursday, January 30th, at 5 o'clock. We do have a work session that day at 3:30. Thank you.